Okay alright yeah this will be a nice little quick lesson for everyone to to have alright it's recording okay good um alright so purple line is snapchat okay blue line is google and we're on facebook's chart now here was snapchat pre earning okay they missed now look what happened with when snapchat missed facebook and google also traded in sympathy okay they they traded in sympathy to that now look how they continued to trade google and facebook running together okay they're running together and they continue to run together this whole this whole time until until later on now here's where the divergence took place google beat okay google beat or no sorry google missed but it wasn't a terrible miss it was just a very small miss right and then that triggered a divergence a slight divergence in price that's what caused this to 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 move or what to to separate from each other because google had a smaller miss while meta had an actual miss and they continued to trade down and so that's why you see those two diverge like that okay because they're in yes they 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 get their money from the same uh they both get their money from ad revenue yeah I'll repeat it sure what I was saying is look look at what happened on the snapchat earnings okay they when snapchat missed google and facebook traded in sympathy okay now snapchat missed and knifed and and stayed flat alright now google and facebook both did the same thing yes all three are completely different stocks right one's a social media company well snapchat's also social media right so facebook snapchat kinda similar there but you know but google's it's a it's a you know browser it's completely different right so but they all get their money from those that ad revenue and you know what I'm saying like they get their money from the same uh you know same spot essentially right so for the most part or not not for the most part but cause google has a has different things as well in terms of like cloud and whatnot um and uh Ali so anyways what I was saying is so snap knifed right in google and facebook responded accordingly right because they're like alright well snapchat's missing okay because their revenue is is down then then that means that facebook and google has that same potential to potentially miss as well which is why you see that nasty response from um you know I'm just gonna take snapchat off of here uh which is why you see that nasty response from um you know from google and facebook and sympathy but where you see that divergence right here where google and facebook start moving away from each other that's because google only had a very small miss whereas facebook had an uglier miss you know their their earnings report their earnings report wasn't as good and that's why you see how that price you know continued to trade down while google continued to trade up you know cause this was google's earnings over here and this is facebook's earnings right here so that's why you see that that split where they start to move away from each other you know so I'll just remove snapchat and you can see how that you know where that played out you can see where the google earnings took took the took the run right here and then that's why you're seeing that divergence right there so that's why facebook is trading away from the rest of the market because you can't no matter no matter how the market's flowing okay even though facebook google even though facebook google uh microsoft apple uh nvidia netflix tesla you know these big titan names they typically run in line with spy right typically but when a catalyst takes place that's when you see that big move away from the 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 overarching market trend right and so like you can see here where we're looking at you know google versus meta right if you look here in the top left of my screen you can see that percentage divergence where meta's down thirteen percent and google's up one point five percent on this timeframe you see what I'm saying and that's why you're seeing that you know so basically if you look at it from snapchat's miss google's up one percent while meta is down ten point six eight percent and that's why the 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 reason for that divergence is because of the earnings you know the most powerful uh in my opinion the most powerful things that can happen to any stock is a catalyst like uh is a catalyst or earnings not no technical analysis can uh uh account for that I don't care how much time you spend on the chart doesn't matter when when something like that occurs you're gonna have positive earnings momentum or negative earnings momentum so and the negative earnings momentum will continue to push that stock in that direction okay now with that being said during our live session today I s- I was saying to everyone I said hey let me I'm gonna just take google off so it stops making the chart jump because of their split I said to everyone I said hey watch facebook because if and when facebook does it's been holding up this support level for about a month now if and when facebook and it's gonna happen on the next red day we have most likely the next red day we have okay the next red day for market overall you're most likely gonna see facebook break through this support level and when it does when facebook breaks breaks through this support level here what's gonna happen for those that are um uh it's about one fifty five forty one okay what's gonna happen when facebook breaks through that level and for those that have been trading with me for a little bit they already know what's sitting under this level um underneath this there's gonna be a liquidity pocket and you're gonna see that price knife that's right it's gonna it's gonna you're gonna see that price knife like a hot knife through butter just like you saw with baba when I told you guys the same thing okay look what happened we fell through that one oh seven and then bang knifed right and then it fell through this one oh one finally it was holding this up and then look what happened once it fell through this one oh one again bang knife and then again another one with a catalyst pushing it to make it even more severe so you know that's just something to understand there what's what's gonna happen and now that facebook has delivered a a trash earnings it's going to continue that negative earnings momentum just like it did in the past same thing with netflix okay it's the same thing when you have a negative earnings right like I traded netflix to the short side for the entire quarter okay you see what happened it's just gonna keep it's let me clear the chart it's it's gonna just keep it'll keep pushing down and every every rally is gonna get met with a sell off okay every rally will be met with a sell off and this was a small little lesson I gave uh to you guys live if you wanna take high probability trades when a chart isn't a downward trending chart the a high probability way to trade is only short when it's in an upward trending chart only go long you know so like when a chart is in a downtrending downtrending chart I like to short the top of every rally and when it's in an up trending chart I like to buy the dip you know so like on exxon right on exxon mobile I've been buying the dip on exxon you know for for months like I don't know since like beginning of the year basically you know and since it started this big rally I've just been buying the dip on exxon like religiously like over and over and over again and I got posted about that one on twitter like I don't even know how many times for exxon you know exxon oxy you know like so like same you know same principle that I'm just describing to you right I like to buy the dip in an upward trending chart I like to short the top in a downward trending chart you know like like amd last year I was buying the dip on amd like all day every every dip man I bought every dip I bought every single dip on amd until this year and then and then this year I've been shorting the top I've been shorting the top of amd and you've probably seen me post about it on twitter dozens of times I've been shorting the top on amd for for months months and months and we'll keep doing that you know cause I think it'll keep even though the company's great I think it's gonna keep getting hit so that's that's my take you know we we ran this whole run down from one oh nine to seventy one I did the same one from one twenty five you know just keep doing that uh because it it automatically by by taking that stance by shorting the top in a downward trending market and our downward trending chart and by buying the dip in an upward trending chart you automatically put yourself in a highly favorable uh probability position just because it's um you know it you you're you're just you're already putting the probability in your favor because you're going with the order flow so if monday if monday or tuesday if it hits one fifty five forty one would strike or expire would you take okay so this goes back to the the q and a that I I don't think you've had a chance to watch yet cory um this goes back to the q and a I did last week on a measured move so what I would do with meta in that situation
I remember that yeah
okay alright are you sat in for the measured move you were you were here for that
yeah
okay alright good alright so you already know then so what I would do if I was gonna trade on a weekly perspective right I'd take my measured my average measured move which I don't know for meta is like what uh it's about uh six to ten dollars looks like I'm just taking a rough look here uh in this market yeah so it looks like it's about about six to ten bucks so I'm gonna anticipate a bigger move because it's 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 breaking a it's breaking a a key support level right so I would anticipate a little bit larger move so you might see like you know something like this maybe like a you know a twelve dollar move or you know thirteen dollar move maybe even fifteen dollar move right some something like that let me see and just get a little top to bottom here sorry I was looking at the difference let me let me look re- reassess this you you I'm doing this on the fly so bear with me um I was looking at the difference here instead but let me get a little bit better gauge so it looks like we're moving that's like a that's a high volume week like forty this week another forty this week we're pushing another what's this it's about a forty dollar move thirty dollar move okay so I might play something like a one forty five strike or a one fifty strike something like that you know because I'm a little bit more open to risk as a just as a trader you know so that that might be um yeah 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 you definitely need to do homework ahead of time that's why I'm sitting here doing this um you guys are just happening to just pop in with me uh you know I'm just I was just sitting here go ahead
so if it's you you got a forty forty dollar per week move I thought we take you wanted to take half of that right so that's what you said take half and then so that'd be twenty
you you'd wanna take an average you you want not the maximum so like
I thought oh alright I thought you I thought you were thinking forty per week average
yeah so I would take outside look at all these weeks right so like this week alright high to low was a fifteen dollar move okay this week this week was high to low a twenty dollar move this week high to low was a ten dollar move this week high to low was a uh like a it was a seventeen a fifteen dollar move you know this week high to low was a fifteen dollar move this week high to low was another fifteen dollar move and this week high to low was like another what's this high low this is a a twelve thirteen dollar move right so I'd take a bigger sample like over the last like couple months right and then I take those sample that sample size and I average it out and so with that sample like just recently right it's you know slowing down that that pressure you know like it like it did from the beginning like it was
probably like fifteen sixteen
right yes exact yeah it's about fifteen sixteen right so
you're cutting it at sixteen to eight and you're saying I I'm gonna be a little more aggressive I'm gonna add a couple points to it
right exactly so if it's like a fifteen dollar move let's let's just say right we just looked at I don't know like the last like six seven weeks just now right let's just say we're looking at you know that move over the over the last what one two three four five six seven weeks you know so that's a pretty decent sample size right it's two months so you get a gauge of how much it's gonna move but breaking a excuse me breaking a key support level I'll anticipate potentially the high side of that move so it might be like a you know a seventeen a sixteen seventeen maybe eighteen dollar move so I'll say okay let's take one fifty four or let's take our move we'll cut it in half right so we'll go to the low side of it in anticipation of a more extreme move now mind you this is me as a higher risk player right so if we're at one fifty four okay so I might wanna look at let's just say for the week right we'll go to august fifth we'll look at strikes that are available right and let's see how they break down okay so if we're gonna be at one fifty four and let's say we took a sixteen dollar average cut that in half so that'd be like one forty six right and we actually have that strike available right so we can actually play that play that strike for august fifth right so we could do like one forty six one forty seven maybe somewhere around there in anticipation of a pretty decent sized move you know and those strikes
and you're taking you're gonna take the weekly because you're 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 watching it all the time and you you can you can take your profits when needed
yep
would you take a monthly or a look maybe another week out if
yeah you could yes absolutely yeah I'm I'm a little more high risk
down what's the down it's just more risk right
yeah more risk
get to the week you wanted to get quick enough
just more risk that's all um you know there's no scenario where you can have less risk in the same reward you know so like in this scenario let's say you took two weeks right maybe you take a a one forty five strike for two weeks out to give it plenty of time to do a ten dollar move which is the is double the amount of time it normally takes to make half the distance so that's like a even safer move you know you could even go you know august twenty sixth give yourself even more time right if you wanted to you could still run a one forty five and run do the same thing one forty five a month long contract that should be plenty of time for that to occur plenty you know and even then you'd still wanna taper your trade if you're gonna trade that with that much size you know what I mean by taper is you don't just go all in at once you know you're taking two what are these they're two hundred forty dollar contracts so you know maybe you're taking one at the break right you're taking one at the break and you know um you know maybe you're taking another one with a a full you know two hours of confirmation you know it it everyone has different risk profiles he said now you're talking crazy um everyone has different risk profiles you know me
you're looking you're looking to
go ahead
you're able to ease into that more because you're gonna go out um two weeks or month right
yeah yeah you're gonna
that weekly you 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 you're not gonna wait as long
no no I'm gonna go for it yeah I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna be operating on a fifteen minute timeframe basically so it would be like something like this like say we get a hard break under that level I'm gonna just move minimize this like say we get a hard break under that level and it holds like we get like a candle like this or something like this like something really intense you know where it's really like viciously breaking that and there's no response to it or I'm just I'm gonna just take my trade I'm just gonna go for it because because it's a key level and I'm getting a valid signal and especially if the order flow for the overall market is down I'm gonna be very aggressive with it because it's 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 a stock that's coming off of negative earnings momentum and it's breaking a key level and the whole market is trading down at the same time so that's like
why you wouldn't be so aggressive at it because you wanna make sure you get in before it's too late and because everyone else is watching it
no just because of the confirmation because
cause you just know
it well it's 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 just having the understanding right so like I just mentioned a few minutes ago sitting underneath this this price okay you have to understand what's sitting here sitting underneath this price right here there is a massive cluster of orders okay huge orders massive ones and they're sitting there in the form of um stop limit stop loss orders okay there's a bunch of stop loss orders because everyone else in the market who got in long at one fifty four okay they eh who's still holding the position when it breaks through this those stop loss orders are gonna start getting triggered bing 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 simultaneously
underneath of it
what's that
what's the level you have underneath again I forgot what you said where's it going to one fifty five
let me let me finish what I'm saying and then I'll then we'll get there what's what's gonna happen is those stop loss orders are gonna start getting triggered boom 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 right and there there the stop loss orders are gonna be triggered simultaneously at the same time this level not only is it a stop loss level for people that are long simultaneously it's a trigger for people like me who wanna go short and and people who wanna short the actual underlying so when they see that break they're gonna start shorting it too and it's gonna push that price even more to the downside so it's a it's a it's what we what I call liquidity pocket so now you're asking me what level that I have underneath from here well at this point we don't have us we don't have a clear cut zone we only have the covid low right so the covid low is gonna be a new target because it's now traded all the way back down to the covid low so a break of this one fifty four it's just gonna take my eyes to where this bounced at so I'm gonna start look I'm gonna take the average of the impulsive move of where it whipped off and I'll start looking at like the one forty two to one forty level like in that range so might be able to pull like a nice ten dollar move out of it because there's definitely gonna be orders sitting here as well so basically what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get a let me pull this into a four hour I'm trying to enjoy a ten dollar move minimum to the downside if not more um I'm gonna let me answer smash's question she's been waiting a little bit and then I'm gonna is that the atr that you're looking for what do you what do you what do you mean atr what what is that abbreviation all time oh I see um when you're doing the calculations for the weekly move I got you got you got you yeah ba- basically that's that's essentially what I'm doing yeah yeah exactly I'm yeah I'm just I'm doing a measured move yeah average true range yeah that that's that's essentially what it is at its core yeah I'm just taking a median you know I mean if you will of those pri- of those values and then um back to cory here back to you uh so you wanna get in before others just wondering how fast you need to get into it so that not so not that much time to get in yeah when you're a weekly you know when you're trading a weekly move or a day trade move you have to be fast that's it it's it's just that's that's just the nature of being a day trader there there's no there's just no way around it um you you have to be fast because the price moved yeah that's just that's the game yeah yeah that's it it's just that's just the game there's no um there's no uh you know there there's no other way around it and but that's why also I recommend being a swing trader that that's why because if you're a swing trader you don't have to be so fast you have more time to think you have more time to analyze your move
yeah why because
be because you're not gonna get one you're not gonna get wrecked by theta theta's not gonna come destroy you immediately because the contract's running out you're not gonna get the big vega hit by trading it out of the money contract that has a little bit of uh has a very short amount of time um and uh you know if the contract if it moves against you like let's say it you know let's say it moves against you let's say it goes like I'm gonna move this rectangle here out of the way let's say it goes like this it moves against you right or or moves in your favor but then it then it it bounces back against you right if you're not an experienced trader you're gonna have a hard time making a decision simple as that you're just gonna have a hard time doing it um you know and and that's very common so what what will happen is you'll be you'll be in your trade right and you know you'll have this move in your favor and you're like oh yeah sweet right problem is most inexperienced traders they'll let a trade just turn against them and just go red 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 you know after going forty fifty percent in the green so what what'll happen is they won't they'll have a hard time making a decision at what to do and and that's that comes into mo- uh multiple reasons most of it's emotional uh mo- most of it's a psychological thing uh they 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 see a trade go green and they 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 stick to their conviction you know and they're like no like I know I'm right and they wanna you know they wanna see the trade play out so they hold it in in on hope in anticipation that it turns around the problem is with that is one they don't have the proper trade plan so like like for me like in this scenario let's say I'm in this trade right let's just say let's say monday morning price opens up it knives through one fifty four it knives through it okay and then it it bounces and turns around on me I'm gonna stop out I'll stop out that's it simple as that I will stop out but an inexperienced trader will not they they'll be two they'll have too much conviction with the trade they they'll 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 let the trade run red against them until it goes zero you know until or until they get to a point where the um the if one more dollar comes out of their account they're just too much pain they're just gonna exit on emotion you know but I'll take that trade you know as and then let it move in my favor as it breaks to the key level and if it turns around on me I'll stop out no big deal I don't care and then I'll just wait for it to do it again I I will sit here and wait for this I I got all day I I I got I got all week long for it to do the thing if it doesn't happen on monday or tuesday or wednesday thursday friday next week the following week I I don't care it doesn't matter to me when it happens because in my mind I know that the earnings negative earnings momentum eventually is going to push through those orders or most likely should it should push through those orders and take that move to the downside so I'll I'll just keep playing it over and over and over and over again here's another problem with inexperienced and beginner and intermediate and uh new traders one they oversize for biggest biggest cancer they oversize their position so one maybe the trade moves in their favor then it moves against them right they don't even have the buying power to take a second trade even even though even though it like like let's say it goes like this like let's say you know it let's say the trade goes like this it goes like this it knives down bounces back up and then knives down again right they they already are wrecked negative thirty forty percent cause they didn't take their break even stop loss then they get to see the worst the even more painful process is you get to see your exact idea play out in real time and you don't have the money to execute on it because they use poor risk management and and that is the 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 next just at me next time I mean I'm not I'm not trying to attack you but that's the that's the 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 problem though that's the problem they'll get in on a trade like this they'll say you know what I'm right I'm right right now and I'm gonna take this trade full size let's go no stop I don't I know I'm right because I did my due diligence I knew what's gonna happen next in the trade and you know what there's some guy there's some guy who's on vacation um in uh in the philippines who's a trader and he gets an alert when the when when price breaks one fifty four and he slams the exchange with 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 fifteen million dollars or whatever and he ticks the price up just enough to cause it to reverse and everyone else to pile into it and to reverse that price just momentarily for two hours meanwhile you're in the trade short and he wrecks you you know or you're wrecked right and you you stop out of the trade and then those same guys who see the price pull back up above one fifty four or a different set of guys they see that as an opportunity to get out right and then they slam the exchange with another fifty million dollar order and knife this price right back down through one fifty four again you see so the problem is So the problem is, an inexperienced trader is not gonna have the um, the emotional. And mental fortitude and psychological uh. Uh uh understand, you know, understanding, if you will, market mechanics to be able to execute on that trade. Efficiently and effectively and make decisions like this, they're not gonna be able to do it, and that's why I recommend to swing trade. Because even if price does this movement on you, but you end up at your target down here somewhere. Over the next two weeks, three weeks, great, right? You have more time for the idea to play out, you know? Alright, for someone with a smaller account in swing trading, would you still recommend having a thirty-five percent stop loss limit on the trade? As well, if say they were only trading one or two contracts at a time? Okay. I I like to use thirty-five percent rule because of this, one, the size that I use. But the the same rule should apply for a smaller account as well. Ultimately, when once I'm fully sized into a position, it doesn't matter what the stock is doing. I should be out at thirty-five percent if I'm swing trading. Because if I'm, if I'm taking a full-sized position, that means that the stock has traded in my favor. Here's the thing, most guys, like let's say, I don't know, let's just say. Let's say I'm I'm just gonna use this as a hypothetical scenario, maybe you saw this, right? You saw this move like this, okay, I'm gonna make this white and I'm gonna bold it. Alright, let's say maybe you saw that move like this and you saw this move like this, right? And in your mind, you're like, okay, when it gets over here to one seventy-two, I'm gonna short this stock. Right? Cuz that makes sense, right? But here's the thing, price goes to one seventy-two, you're inexperienced, you short the stock here, right? Now, price moves up against you like this and you keep shorting it the whole way up. Now you're all, you're fully sized, right? And you don't know what is going on, what's gonna happen, et cetera, let's just assume you didn't get the earnings move. Though dollar cost average up or into a full-sized position. When I take my first entry, it's gotta be one with confirmation, so like if I was taking an entry here, let's say I wanna enter here, okay? I wanna enter here, next day, price knives in my, or price moves down and rejects like it did, that's what created that wick. Okay, that'll be enough to give me a first entry, right? Next day, it moves down in my favor again, makes a hard break of my zone, I'd full, I'd full-size it right here. Like if it did a move like that, you know, like something like this, it broke my zone. In in the in the after hours or pre-market, right, I'd full-size it right there at the open, in anticipation of a continuation. Okay, so, but the problem is, yeah, yeah, I would, yeah, I would do that, yeah, on a weekly, absolutely. Yeah, because I would be targeting this same level here. Cuz one, I would already have the initial entry here, that's up, that that entry is gonna be up. You know, maybe a hun- well, how much of a move this was, this is a five dollar move? Six dollar move, that that initial entry is already gonna be up like, you know, maybe sixty, seventy, eighty percent, right? So when I, when I full-size it from here, right, when I, when I full-size it, I'm gonna be in the green already. I'm already gonna be in the green because of that initial entry. And then it would have to keep moving in my favor for for me to stay in, you feel me? It'd have to keep going and I would use that structural level as a potential stop, you know? So until it got to my target, once it got to my target down here, I just take my exit. I got to my target, take, that's it, take the profit, go home, you know, that trade from here to there. You know, that might be worth, you know, hundred fifty, two hundred percent or more. I mean, what is that, that's one sixty-eight to one fifty-seven and probably more, you probably get maybe three hundred percent off of a move like that on a weekly. You know, even though you didn't get in at the very, very tippy top. You know what I mean? And you didn't get in because you didn't get a full signal, you know? Like, let's see how it looked on like a mi- a mac, a micro, like let's just, you know, we can just examine how the trade would have looked, right? And how like me personally, I would have taken it, like, alright, so like here I'm up in my zone. Alright, the day before, we actually got a signal, we got it, we got a signal right here. You had thirty minutes of red, nice rejection right at the top of the level, right? So that'd be enough to put me in a trade right there, next, next day, I'd take another entry with a second rejection here. For sure, I, if I saw that, I'd take another entry, no doubt, I'd take an entry here too. When I, when I saw that knife out the open, I would take that and I would use this level as a structural stop. It's like if this moved against me and broke past this and held, right? We were doing the opposite thing today with spy, right? We were waiting for it to break past the key level to the upside, right, and you see how that played out, right? You were, you were trading that with me, Cory, when spy broke out to the upside. Right, and you see what happened after it broke out, it's because those orders were exhausted. So, you know, I I would have taken an entry here on that knife, on that hard rejection. And I definitely would have taken one here when it rejected this same key level again, you feel me? Now going back to Ali's question, right? At this point, at this point in time, if you were in a small account, you know, maybe Facebook is not the best stock for you to trade. Right? Because the the contracts are a little bit more, you know, they're they're a little more pricey. Um, you know, just es- especially if you're gonna swing trade, going back to your question, right? If you're gonna swing trade, it would, it these would be a little more pricey for a swing trade and be more difficult. For a small account to trade that, because even if you bought like, you know, even if you were like on a two-week contract, right? Like for a strike that you would want, you know, like something up in here in this range, especially as a beginner, you wanna trade closer to the money. You know, because you're 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 inexperienced, so you wanna be a little tighter, you know, maybe you're at like a one fifty-five or one fifty-two. You know, something a little closer, you know, these are two hundred fifty dollar contracts, so maybe Facebook isn't the best. Uh, the best ticker to trade, right? But maybe you would wanna trade something like this, like MU, like Micron, that's got cheaper contracts. You know, where you can, you can go, you can give yourself a little bit more time to uh for a trade like that to play out. Right, and you can get in these contracts really close to the money, um, and you can then utilize that rule. Um. Yeah, but but see, here's the thing, um. You know, if you're, if you Ali are using maybe, uh, let's say a ten thousand dollar account size, right? Let's just, I'm gonna hypothetical, right, if you're using a ten thousand dollar account size, right? For you to trade a three hundred, four hundred dollar contract, you're gonna need it. I say it, but me personally, I like to take at least three entries on a swing trade, at least three. That that's what I like to do, a thirty percent, thirty percent, thirty percent. You know, that that's how, you know, say thirty-three percent, if you wanna be technical, but thirty percent, thirty percent, thirty percent, right? So I'm gonna, so automatically, right, by default, based on your account size. If you had a ten thousand dollar account, you can't trade Facebook, you can't swing trade Facebook, that's it. You 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 can't swing trade Facebook, you're you 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 just can't do it. You need to trade something like Micron, you need to trade something like, uh, yeah, if let's, let's assume a ten thousand dollar account. You need to trade something like AMD, um, you could, you could trade Baba, you could trade, um, you could trade spy, you know? Um, you wanna trade something with a smaller accounts, or a smaller contract size. So you can ease your way into those contracts and still buy time, right? You could trade Ford, you could trade Lucid, um, you know, those kinda tickers that are gonna have cheaper. Uh, cheaper contract costs, like you wouldn't trade something like Tesla, you know, cuz it got an eight hundred dollar contract. For a contract that's actually, you know, has a high probability of hitting, you know what I mean? You you know, cuz Tesla does fifty, sixty dollar swings every day and even, even those fifty, sixty dollar swing contracts. That are fifty bucks away, right, even if you bought two weeks on the contract, right? Like, look, man, these are, you know, these are eighteen hundred dollar contracts, you know? Um, so anyways, so you would wanna, you wanna, one, first of all, you gotta eh you gotta recognize what tickers. What tickers are appropriate for your account size, right? And then from there, you wanna scale into your contracts, um. You know, you wanna scale into your contracts with at least three entries, at least three. You know, that that's uh that's it, if you're gonna swing trade, you gotta have at least three entries with confirmation. At that's it, especially as a beginner, because you're not, you're not able to make the. Not you as an individual, Ali, but as a begin, I'm speaking in general. Um, you're not able to make the the decisions and read price fast enough to um, you know. To trade otherwise, you know what I mean? And you're gonna get shaken out so quickly, you know, so like, say like this. Let's just, I'm gonna hypothetical with you again, let's say I'm trading. Um, let's say I'm trading mo- uh, I'm gonna get off Tesla because it's a bad example. Because it's only, it's pretty much reserved for large accounts, let's say I'm trading AMD, this is a good one, you know, I like this stock, you know? This is a, this is a good ticker for any account, doesn't matter, big, small, doesn't matter, you can trade this stock effectively, okay? Let's just say, um, you know, I don't know, let's say I wanna short up here at ninety-five. Okay, I wanna short again at ninety, ninety-five dollars, okay? Let's just say, wanna short AMD at ninety-five, alright, if I wanna trade AMD. And I wanna enter into these contracts, that's a a valid contract, maybe I want. You know, maybe I wanna look at like a, you know, a ninety contract, you know, something like that, see, even this is a little expensive, actually, I take that back. Let's, let's, let's go to something a little smaller, even, let's go to something a little smaller, let's go to, let's go to Ford. I like this one, I like to trade this one, a low beta stock, it's a good one to trade. Um, let's say I wanna get in on this contract, right, I wanna get on this contract. And look, I can give myself two weeks of time, look, I can buy these fourteen fives right at the money. Right here at the money, nice and tight, and I can get in at forty bucks a pop, you know? And I can scale that in, right, and I can scale it in and build that position up, even if I have a ten thousand dollar account, right? And you're looking at, I don't know, maybe you wanna take uh five, uh, maybe you wanna take like three hundred bucks. Right, that could be a good position size for a ten thousand dollar account, you know? You can take like, dude, you can take like eight entries at this price, you know? You can, you can take like seven, eight entries at this, even as it, even as it moves in your favor, you can take a bunch of entries at this price, you know? So, um, you know, and 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 still buy yourself a few weeks of time, you can even buy a month of time, and you can buy a whole month. You know, these contracts are so cheap on this ticker, look, you can buy a fourteen strike for the same price with a whole month of time. You know, and give yourself plenty of room, and look, these contracts are on sale today, they're all fifty, they're all fifty percent. They're fifty percent off today, you know, and it's a low beta stock with low IV, you know, so this is a a nice, nice contract to play right here, right? And you can actually see, look, these guys right here, these guys got slammed out today big time, cuz these guys were holding. But you know, these guys are, were trying to trade this twenty-two five, uh, this twenty-two thousand five hundred open interest on the twelve-five contract because it was relative. But um, anyways, um, you know, you can scale into a a contract like this and give yourself time. You have a whole month to move into it, right, and it's at the money or real close to the money. And you can scale in, and if it moved against you, you can, you can take a nice commex exit and not let yourself go red on it. I'm gonna go back to Cory, he asked, why closer to the money? Why closer to the money? Because of the the the, one, okay, here's the thing, um. Here here's the thing, let's, let's go, um, let's go weekly, okay? Alright, here's the thing, you're close to the money, okay, brother? When your contract moves against you. And you're deep, eh actually, let's look at something here, I can show you exactly why, yeah, look, I'll show you, look at this, okay? Let's look at today, Ford traded up, look at these con- excuse me, look at these contract values, okay? Now these guys down here are worthless, so don't, don't pay those any attention, but look at the ones that actually have some, uh, that that are reasonable, right? The price traded up against it, look at this, the eighteen strike lost twenty-six percent today, okay? The seventeen strike lost twenty-four, the sixteen lost thirty-eight, the fifteen lost fifty-five. But look down here, these out of the money ones, they lost seventy-two percent, seventy-two, seventy-one, sixty-seven. When you're closer to the money, you're not gonna get hit as hard when you're wrong, that's why. That that's why, and the reason I say to trade closer to the money as a beginner especially, is one. A beginner and intermediate trader, they're gonna have poor risk management, they're gonna full-size out the gate, they're gonna have poor emotional control. They're gonna have poor understanding of the market mechanics. And how the, how, how the contracts function, how theta works, how IV works. How uh market makers manipulate, uh, they're, they're gonna have a, just a a a whole slew of problems that they're gonna run into. And so if they just trade closer to the money, at the money or even in the money, they're just gonna have a much more relaxed. Trading experience, you know, you trade the fourteen-five contract, right? Let's say, let's say you bought a month, let's say you're out here at August nineteenth, right? If you were on the fourteen point five contract and you held it through those earnings, you got wrecked first of all, is. You know, cuz you you decided to gamble anyways, so you got wrecked. But the point is, is even if you were to hold through, like just look at these contract values, even if you decided to gamble and you held through. If you were on a in the money contract, look, you only lost twenty percent, you know, it's not, it's not that big a deal. If you were here, you lost twenty-eight, you know, and as you get closer to that strike, you know, the 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 values increase even more, right? Like these guys that were playing out of the money down here, look, they're at, at the end of today, this guy's down sixty percent. You know, he's down sixty percent, he's got a whole month left. But if you were up here in these closer strikes or at the money, you know, you're down forty, you're down thirty. You know, maybe your risk tolerance was a thirty-five percent, you played in the money, you know, maybe that would have tapped you out today. And you're not take as big of a hit, you know? Because again, like I said, most beginners, they have a cancer with their trading habits and that cancer is oversized position. Number, number one cancer, they oversize. They like to oversize and the oversize, it obliterates their account, it destroys the account. So, um, what's max dollar percent of account into one full trade? Okay. This is a personal question, okay? Because it's gonna be relative to you as an individual and your risk tolerance. In my opinion though, my opinion. Um, in my, in my opinion, if, if you have a small account, a small account. You should try to keep your trades under, under five percent, if you have a very small account. I know some guys trade with like, you know, a thousand bucks, two thousand bucks, three thousand bucks. You should, you should try to, you should try to keep it as as, you know, five percent, a small account, you know, you you try to. Um, you know, eh for for a small account, you know, if you gotta trade Ford contracts, you trade Ford contracts. You know, if you gotta trade these little ten dollar, uh, uh, to me, uh, to me, under, under five thousand small. Yeah, uh, under five thousand a small account, yeah. You know, if you gotta trade a, um, you know, a hundred dollar position size. You know, hundred twenty dollar position size, then that's, that's what you trade with. That's, that's it, until, until your account grows. Here's a great, here's a great one for you to put in your notes, for everyone, sizing up is a privilege. Sizing up is a privilege, it's a privilege to size up. You get a month of green and your account is growing? Okay, maybe you can size up your position size, not the percentage. Me personally, I like to trade, I like to trade one percent of my account, that's, that's what I like, I like to trade one percent. I have a large account, so nice for me to trade one percent. So, but for a small account, even medium-sized account, you know, three percent max. You know, three, three percent is 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 good, man, it's if you have a medium-sized account. Yeah, yeah, five percent, maybe full entry, one to two percent per entry, yeah, that's good, that's a good rule right there. You know, so if you gotta trade, you know, ten dollar, twenty dollar contracts, okay? So what? No big deal, because you know what, bro, here's the thing, check this out. If you were trading Ford with these little, look. If you were trading Ford with these little, look, these, these little contracts, right? They're, they're cheap, man, they're, these contracts are pennies on Ford, look. If you were trading these little, these, these were pennies earlier in the week, I don't, I don't know what they were in front of me right in this moment, but. I'm telling you right now, these uh, these contracts on Ford were like, they were probably like fifteen, twenty bucks to start the week out. You know, so if you, if you had traded this correctly, and you were on the right side of order flow this week with Ford, and you bought a. A fifty dollar, hundred dollar position size, right? You could have closed, again, here, you know what, I'm gonna go look at it right now, just for, just for giggles. Let's, let's just get a curious, you know, move here, alright, so what, you were at, before earnings, you were at thirteen bucks, okay? Let's just say, you played at the money, you didn't even, um. You didn't, you didn't even do anything else, you know, you, you didn't even do anything uh, intense, I should say, nothing out of the money, no, no swinging for the fence. A valid strike for the timeframe, let's just assume you wanted to play the earnings, even if you played after the earnings, how about that? We can even do that too, we can, we can look at both, let's say you played the thirteen-five after you got the earnings, right? If you already got positive earnings, and you're like, you know what, that's a good, that's good for positive earnings momentum. I'm gonna play the thirteen-five strike, I'm gonna buy the dip, right, that could be a valid trade setup. Let's just look at how that would have turned out, out of curiosity, you played the thirteen point five strike after earnings. The thirteen point five strike after earnings in this dip right here, those contracts were twenty dollars. At the low, they were eighteen, at the open of the day, when it, even when it opened up, they were. They opened up the day at forty, okay? So, even if you weren't that great of a trader, if you entered at any point in time during this and you bought a falling knife. You'd have bought in anywhere between forty and twenty dollars, okay? Let's just say, alright, those contracts hit a peak price today. At a hundred and thirty-one here at the close, okay? So, no matter where you bought, yes, yeah, I'm looking at it right now. If you played at the money, thirteen point five strike, okay, thirteen-five strike. Any, and you had bought, literally, if you had bought at any point yesterday, that didn't even matter. If you played at the money, nothing risky, thirteen-five strike. And you bought at any point during the day yesterday, did not matter when you bought it, okay? At the close yesterday, those contracts were. At the close, they were fifty bucks, okay? If you bought any point during the day yesterday, you would have paid anywhere between twenty dollars to fifty dollars, okay? There were fifty bucks here, there were eighteen dollars at the tip here, and at the close today, they were a hundred and thirty-one dollars. Okay, so, the point is, is you could have more, even if you were a complete donkey. Okay, even if you are a complete donkey, and you had no, you waited for all the confirmation. It making me hot here, you waited for all the confirmation in the world. And you said, you know, I'm just gonna sit here and watch Ford the entire day to see if it's gonna fade again, right? And you're like, a, a, a small account holder, and you're like, you know what? I'm not even gonna play an, at, at the money strike at fourteen, I'm gonna play in the money at the close. I'm gonna just buy the contract at the close, in the money, hold it overnight, and we're gonna run that trade. You would have made eighty dollars a contract, okay? So you would have more than doubled up your money by trading that earnings momentum, even if you were an absolute donkey. Now, if you were tiny bit aggressive, you could have bought in at any point in time during, what is this? This is a, uh, what, three hours, if you, if you, if, if you. Just looked at Ford and bought in at any time during this three-hour timeframe, you could have potentially. Taken your money and gone, yeah, at the low, you would have went six hundred percent from yesterday to today. Okay, so, the point I'm trying to make is, there is, um. There's no shame in taking a small contract. Please, tell me, is there anything wrong with buying a twenty or twenty-five or thirty-dollar contract? And turning it into a hundred and thirty-dollar contract in one day? There's nothing wrong with that, right or wrong, all of us know that, right? That's a good trade, so humble, humble yourself, humble yourself, and. Just say, you know what, I'm humble enough, and I know my account is small, and I know I'm learning. I'm gonna just stay with a hundred dollar position size until I get better. I'm gonna stay with a hundred fifty-dollar position size until I grow my account. When I take my account from five thousand to seven thousand, I, I don't, I don't know what your account size is, so I can't, you know. Uh, parameter, I can't give you the parameters, but you ba- base it off of your account size, you know what I mean? So like, like, let's say, you know, a ten thousand dollar account, you might use a. Uh, a three hundred dollar size, you know, or four hundred dollar size, maybe tops, max, max, max. That'd be it, you know, that'd be a, you know, but the, the point is, is you don't need. The, 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 the main key I'm trying to get at here is, you don't need more size. You don't need size, you need better trading, that's it, you don't need the size, I'm telling you, I promise you. You just need better trading, yeah, that's it, you don't, you don't need to YOLO. You don't need to YOLO, you don't, and if you real, you know, like, if you really wanna like, you know, play a. Uh, uh, a game, you know, like, some, sometimes I, I've, I've done this in the past where I'll compound wins, you know? I'll compound it, maybe I'll start a trade out with like, I don't know, two hundred bucks. I take my two hundred to five hundred, like, okay, now I'm playing with house money, and five hundred, and I compound it up, and I keep doing that, and I keep doing that over and over again. Man, you know what, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you funny story, I'm gonna go back and I'll show you the trade what I did. I compounded some wins on a earnings momentum on AMD, I'll show you the trade. And this was just an absolutely silly one, this right here, I uh, playing in with anticipation of a big earnings beat. Uh, this was an insane trade for me, I, I started with a very small amount here. I can't remember, maybe it was like a hundred, two hundred bucks, something like that, and I ran this trade up for multiple days in a row. By time I got to the end of this trade, the final step actually was from here to here, the final move. Uh, I kept compounding the trade over and over again, uh, I ended up with like twenty grand at the peak here, by, by playing this game. Was starting with a very teeny tiny amount. And, and the funny thing is, I kept taking money off the table, and it, it just, it just kept, it just, it just ke- it just kept going. It, so I was just like, alright, well, I'll just, I'll just keep going with it, this final step here, actually, on this move. I, I had, I had, I had taken so many trades on, I just kept compounding it over and over again, and. The final move here, I bought a thousand dollar, um, I bought a thousand dollar. Uh, worth of contracts here, and it went two thousand percent the next day, and um. You know, it was, uh, I was like, wow, that was, that was insane, and I, I, and I'd been taking money off the table. Because it just kept doing that, so I was like, alright, whatever, but, you know, I was just playing with house money, so I was like, alright, well, if I lose, it doesn't matter. You know, I've already made like, whatever amount of money I made at the time, but, you know, by time that trade, one trade was over. You know, like, the, the final step of that trade was a twenty thousand dollar day, so. But anyways, but yeah, the, the point is though, the, the point that I was getting at is, I took a very small amount of money to start. And I, I just kept trading well, that, that's the thing, I kept trading well and, and trusting my process, right? And then when the opportunity presented itself to me, I should have just put the whole thing in there, is what I should have done. But I, 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 I just, I, I honestly, I felt like it was gonna run out of steam, cuz I was like, this is just insane. I mean, it was just a crazy run, it ran from what, from eighty-five all the way to a hundred and twenty-two. You know, it was just a, you know, it was just a crazy run, so, um. Corey, if you had been with me, um, in here on AMD. I, I gave the signal for everyone to take this trade from all the way from the top, from the tippy top. We traded AMD from one oh nine all the way down to seventy-one, sir. We, we just did that. Actually, if you go back and look through my Twitter, you'll see it, you'll see the posts. We, we ran this all the way down, from one oh nine all the way down to seventy-one sixty. We, we got the entire thing, so, there will be more. That, thank you, man, I, I really appreciate that compliment, um, it's all good, it's okay. Uh, there, dude, there's gonna be ten thousand other trades, um, going back to. What did you say, Jesus, I would, I see what you've done for others, would have loved to risk two hundred bucks for twenty K, yeah, yeah. I know, man, it was a nice trade, but um, yeah, it was like, literally, I was like, oh, just. You know, I was like, alright, they're probably gonna have positive earnings, let's see how the trade goes, and I, I just put some, I put a few hundred in. And it went nicely, I was like, okay, cool, I took money off the table, next day, I just, I just kept going, I, I just kept rolling the. The contracts over and over again, and it just, it just kept going, so I'm like, well, fuck it. And then when they had the positive earnings, I was like, well, positive earnings momentum, let's keep going, and it was just an insane run. But uh, but anyways, um. Ali, two hundred extra turn, yeah, bro, you know, it was, it was a crazy run, but dude, I just did that with you guys from one oh nine to seventy-one. I mean, al- almost as intense, wa- wasn't as intense, but it was, that was pretty damn good, man, that's a forty-point move, man. I ju- I just did that with you guys, like, you know, um. You vote for finding one of those next week, I will definitely do my best, sir, uh, that is for sure, I, I will definitely do my best. Um, yeah, that, those Tesla calls are crazy, I know, I know, I know, I know. You know, I didn't take those, and I, I'm, I'm salty that I didn't. Um, you know what, going back to the, both of these, uh, points, Smash and um, Corey. About Baba and Tesla, this goes back to my same point. That I made at the beginning when we started talking. When a company has a catalyst, when there is a catalyst, whether it's a, a, a catalyst of news. Or earnings, those two things are the biggest push of a stock price. The biggest push you're gonna get, eh, in my opinion, they're gonna be the biggest push, so when you have the news. And it happens during the day, it's, it's an easy, it's a no-brainer trade, it's, it's like, it's almost no-brainer. Like, because the probability of you being correct at that point, of you being right on that trade, is like. You know, it's, it's, it's like ten to one, you know, like, you, 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 you most likely gonna be correct. Especially when the news is bad, especially when the news is bad, that's why I called this Baba play. I called it in the morning, I was like, yo, this is bad, man, yeah, I love bad news, yeah. I love bad news, man, give me all the bad news, when, when there's bad news, just, just trade the momentum. You know, yeah, way better than good news, yeah, because, cuz bulls are timid, man, they're chicken. They're chicken, they're, they're, they're chicken, bro, they buy slow. Yeah, I love bad news, man, um, yeah, give, give me all the bad news there is. Yeah, yeah, I, I, you know, I trade both sides of the coin, but I prefer to be a bear. Because I'm an options trader, because when it's bad, the frickin' price knives, you know? Yeah, when it's bad, the, the price knives, and it knives a lot faster, you know? It's, it, it's, it's, look, look, look here, look at this, loo- look at this. We just, we're just looking at a random chart right now, how long did it take for the price to go? From eighty-eight to seventy-one, one, two, three, four, five, six sessions, right? But how long did it take for the price to go back from seventy-one back to eighty-eight? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve sessions, you see? That's why it pays to, to be bear, because when you have these kind, dude, this move we were on. Man, we actually cut a couple contracts a little too early on this, but the contract we were initially on was the eighty-six. And that ran up like, it was like fifteen hundred percent, man, it was like fifteen hundred percent on this move, you know? So, you, when you're a bear, man, you, you can, man, you can make a lot of money. You, you can make a lot of money on the short side, you know, like, this move here was nasty. This, what, what is this, this is like, was it one oh nine, this is a thirty-point move, you know, and it does it fast. Now, if this price gets all the way back up there again, you know, it's gonna take its time getting there, it's gonna be slow. But the, 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 the move to the downside gonna be fast and violent, yeah, like Smash just said. You know, escalator up, elevator down, I li- I like to say, uh, bulls take the stairs and bears jump out the window, you know? But yeah, um, yeah, the, the point is, whenever there's a catalyst though, Corey. Whenever there's a catalyst that happens in the middle of the day, most of the time, man, if you can get it, you can make a nice money. You, you can make nice, nice money, you know, as long as the price doesn't like, do something real, real, um, well, actually, sometimes. I'll give you a great example, uh, Ali and I traded this one together, I remember this trade. And we, we made out real nice on it, let me just show you something here, uh, there was a catalyst on Qualcomm in the middle of the day. And actually, we're gonna talk about Qualcomm here in a second more, um, but let me just show you something. It was right here, look, there was a catalyst in the middle of the day, right? Price shoots up ten bucks middle of the day, now, there's no way, um. Uh, yeah, Corey, I have a basket of stocks that I trade consistently, um, so, look at this. There's a catalyst here in the middle of the day, I can't remember what the news was, I think it was something with Microsoft or some, something like that, I can't remember. So, so they got something going on where they're, they're gonna do well, alright, whatever, here's the thing, price jumps up ten bucks. You're probably not gonna catch this move, you're probably not gonna catch it, because by time it moves, unless you're looking at the, the chart. You know, you got alarm set, you're probably gonna miss it, now, when a stock makes a move like this, okay? Shorts are gonna attack it, so, what we did, Ali and I, we shorted this stock, or one thirty-three strike. Okay, I said, Ali, just wait for the, wait for the price to run out of steam, it's gonna run out, when it runs out of steam, short it. No, 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 no-brainer here, I'm like, nah, the, I can't remember, the news wasn't that crazy, you know, so, it was like, you know, it was enough to cause a pop. But it wasn't like, something to cause a multi-day rally, I said, ah, just wait, we, we sat there, I got the, um. Cuz I'm, I'm always watching the, this stock, Qualcomm, uh, cuz I trade it regularly, I saw the price ripping on one of my charts, I said, oh, that's weird. I went and saw the news, and I just calmly just watched it, you know, I said, hey, man, just wait for it to, um. Let it run out of steam, we'll take the one thirty-three strike, you know, pretty close to the money, once it runs out of steam, I saw where it fell to. It fell, right here, it's caused those wicks, bounced, came up again, retested, failed again. I said, alright, let's, let's target the one thirty-three retrace, you know, nice, clean move, let's target the one thirty-three, let's look how the trade played out. So, that's what happened there, you get a news break in the middle of the day, that's a, that's a good time to make a play. If you, if you have, if you have an understanding. You know, the market flow was down overall, so you're not gonna trade against the market flow, even though the. Yeah, we, we caught this move, yeah, we caught the one thirty-three strike, yeah. Yeah, we caught the one thirty-three, I don't know where, I don't remember where Ali cashed out on this, but we caught this move though, yeah. Yeah, you know me, bear, bear, go to zero, take it to zero. Barrett, yeah, 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 I, 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 I hold, I rage hold positions. Four hundred percent, nice, good shit, yeah, yeah, I kept holding, yeah, I just, I just, I just helped. Cuz we had the Micron earnings, I believe, the same week, so, um, so yeah, I just, I just kept, yeah, I think we had the Micron earnings the same week. So I was like, I was like, and the market was also trading down too, so, it was a easy, you know, you had two catalysts going on. So, it was a easy, you know, you had two catalysts going on. Um. Let me see, um. Let me see, let me see, we got a couple questions here. Uh, do you only, do you, do you jump only on stocks you have a charts for already? Uh, yeah, Cory, so let me give you, um, a little understanding here. I know you're new trading with me. But uh, I trade the same tickers over and over again, over and over and over and over again. Like, I have like a basket of like, uh, it's like ten stocks, basically, like ten in total. But I trade like, five, five like, all the time. You know, I, I, I keep, I keep trading those five like, like regularly, but I have like five more that like I, I watch, you know? Of that I, I'll trade like intermittently, um, you know, and then I have like a watch list total of. I'll tell you right now, like my total watch list is like, it's not that many stocks. I don't have that many on there. Um, I got, uh, I, 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 I got a total of, what? I got a total of, I got, I got thirty five stocks total, that are like on my watch list, you know? But I, I typically, I only trade like five stocks really, for the most part, like every week. And then I have five more that like, if they, you know, if they do a thing, I'll do a thing too. So, um, but yeah, uh, let me go back to the chat. Um. Let's see. Let's see, a couple questions. What made you decide to go with a few days out versus same day? Um, I believe, well, this was a weekly, so I had to go a few days out. Yeah, yeah, I didn't have a choice. Yeah, I think we tapped out here. Yeah, yeah, this was the end of the week. Yeah, so we didn't get the final. Yeah, I had the weekly. Um, so you, you couldn't have taken a zero DTE, cuz it was a weekly trade. Yeah, we had like four days left and it was like on a Tuesday, I think. Let me see, yeah, it was a Tuesday. Yeah, it was, this was a Tuesday. So I, I had the, I had the weekly. Um, so you di- you didn't have a choice, uh, but to take the weekly. So we, we ran it all the way to like basically here, to the end. Just cuz it was so deep in the money at that point, didn't matter. Uh, so we just ran it all the way to the expiration. Um. So, uh, let's see, next question. Um. Speaking of going to zero, what do you think of Baba going forward? I know it melted today, but you think it worth being positioned for that? Being possibly delisted? You know, I've been short on Baba for like seven months. Um, you know, I've been shorting Baba off the one twenty level since the, since twenty twenty two started. Um, you know, that stock has been, uh, just, it, it, you know, that stock can't catch a break, man. And, um, I thought that, I'll just go to the chart, I honestly thought that the support. From the government here, back in March, where it caused this big giant rally. I thought that that would be, um, you know, that, that, that would have had a little bit more weight. To, uh, you know, hopefully help the stock out a little bit, but this company just keeps getting bad news, man. For like, what? It's been getting bad news for like, like two years. Like two years, you know? Like, it, it's in the gutter, man. And, um, unfortunately, like as the news keeps coming out, I can only, I just only see more downside. You know? And the thing is, is like, if you look at the position cost distribution, there's still people holding this that are deep red up in like. Two sixty, two fifty range, like, and they're, you know, these guys are underwater. So, you know, like, it's been two years and they're, you know, they're, they're just. It's bad, man. So like, I, I can only see more downside. Will it get delisted? Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna keep shorting it. So, like, that's it, like, if, you know, we, I closed my position out today because I was on a zero DTE. But next week, when it opens up, I'm gonna look to short it again. Like, if it has a dead cat bounce, I'll, I'll short the top again. Like, I, I, I haven't bought anything long on Baba, basically since that government news. But I, I've just been shorting the one twenty level over and over again. I've been shorting it since, since here. You know, I was shorting it last year too, like, it, it just, it just keeps, I mean, like, look at it. Look at it, like, there's just been no, nothing, the only positive thing that occurred was back here in March, really. And, you know, there's just been nothing good about it, so. Like, who knows? Go to zero, huh, keep shorting it, yeah. Yeah, I, I, delisting would just be. Yeah. Yeah, these guys need to let it go, I agree, um. Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think the company, uh, you know, I see Baba as like the Amazon of, of China, basically, you know? But I, I mean, look, look how it traded after hours too. Wavy, if you're in here, your position is almost in the money now, and you got, you got time on it too. So, um, I see you're in here, I don't know if you're listening in, but, um. Yeah. Oh, I see you just popped out, but, um. But yeah, Wavy, I don't know if you're, uh, you know, you paid attention to Baba after hours, but you know, it kept melting. Um. But yeah, yeah, these guys do need to let it go. They're crazy. Yeah, they're crazy. So I don't, I don't see anything really positive about it. Um, you know, I'll look to short it again next week though, if it, you know, keeps going, I'm just gonna keep shorting it. You know, it's been underperforming the market all week long, like, look, look at the weekly chart. You know, it's like three weeks in a row, just solid red, off that one twenty level, I told you. You know? I wish I would have held those ninety five Ps a little bit longer. Um. It's not a ticker I'm, I'm particularly familiar with, but we can look at it though. It's not one that I, I trade. So e-commerce, yeah, I don't. I don't trade this one, but like from a, I, I don't know anything about it fundamentally. So it's, it's hard for me to say anything fundamentally, but like when I look, just like when I look at the, the, the stock. Imp- like as, as it, as it is right now, like this, this is where my eyes go. My eyes just immediately just go like this. Like this, boom, and then. Th- this is where my eyes go, just like this. I, as, as soon as I look at it. So that, that's what, that's what I see. You know? So that's, that's how I see it immediately, just out the gate, and if I wanted to tighten this up a little bit more. I'd maybe take this down a notch, just because it's in a downward trend, go like that. So, I, this is how I view it from a technical perspective. So like, this is what I would do. Based on the chart. I don't know anything about it fundamentally, this could throw that technical viewpoint, but from here, I'd short. You know? Um. Um, yeah, Wavy, yeah, you're looking good, man. You're looking like a good position. Yeah, I don't know anything about it, uh, fundamentally. Oh, it's the Amazon of South Korea, okay. Um, yeah, I, it, it's hard for me to speak on it fundamentally. I, I don't know anything about it, okay, so. Yeah, but look at this chart though, it's hideous, it's ugly. So I'd short this. I, I would short this, uh, Smash. Be- because, you like, loo- loo- like, like, you know, when I zoom out, like, thi- this, all I can see on this is, is just. I mean. Like, my, 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 my eyes just go, yeah. Oh, what is this thing doing, man? You know, like. Why, why is this doing this? Just go from here. You know, my eyes just go like this, like, that's it, like, that's how I, that's how I see this, you know what I mean? So I'd short it. Uh, that's all I would do. I, I would short this until they got like some stellar news to bring this thing back to life. Like something amazing occurring. So, so yeah, I, I would short this like right now, basically. Like, as of today, that's, let me see, that's a signal for me, closing the weak red in a valid zone. So, like, as of today, like, I'm gonna just tell you like what I would have done. One, I would have taken this short right here, and I probably would have went full size based on that move. So. Like, look, look, it rejected right at the top of this zone, like clean, like hard rejection. So, yeah, I mean, like, that, that's, C N P G short on Monday, got it, yeah. So, um. Yeah. Um. Alright, let's see, I got, I see you guys got a few questions. G M, chart on G M E, bro, alright, it's, it's hard because it's a fricking meme stock, man. But, we'll look at it, fuck it, we'll look at it. I know they just split too, so. Um. Hey dude, that's a hard one, man, cuz it's so like, it's so heavily manipulated on both sides. But, alright, like, if I was, uh, let's just assume it's not G M E, like, if I was looking at this stock, okay? If, if I was looking at this stock and I wanted to play it, this is how, what I would do, like. The thing is, is knowing the stock, it's, it's fundamentally just, it's just jacked. So like, that's how I view it from a long side position. And based on the recent price action, you know, from a short side position, you know, like this is. This is where I, I, I see it, you know, like, that's how I, how I view it from a short side move. But, it's, dude, the, the, like I said, the problem with this stock is, it's hard to do that because. Fundamentally or even technically, nothing makes sense. Like, there, there's no rhyme or reason for this. You know, it, it's just, it's just gonna move on its own accord, you know, it's, it's just gonna do whatever it wants. Uh, based on whatever hype news is out there, you know, but like. If I was gonna long it, like, I'd, I'd long it, like, basically it, like. Like, I would never long this stock, but if I, if I was gonna long it, I'd look at like twenty two, twenty two five. You know, for a, a, a real healthy long at like twenty. You know, I see these Redditors are trying to hold it up there, and then I, I'd look to short, you know, here, in this range. You know, and I'd buy time on it, but I wouldn't even mess with this thing, man, because the thing is, like, you're gonna. I've shorted this stock, I'm not gonna lie, I've shorted it on these pops like this, uh, let's see. Uh, shorted this like, what, one, two, three, like, four times, I've shorted this stock. Um, but, you know, I don't, I don't like it, man, because it's, it's just. Yeah, I'm against the Redditors, I'm, I'm not sorry for it. Um. Yeah, so, go back to Wavy, let me see. Baba melted after hours, closed up twenty percent on the one you held, yeah, good, and you also secured some profit. And you know what? On Monday, those positions that you cut. You could di- make a decision if you wanna add back into that, that position on, of Baba, you know? But at least you, you knocked some down and you closed up in the green and it traded in your favor after hours, so that looks good. So if you wanna add more back on Monday, you can run it again, you know, and you can target this, uh, this eighty one, eighty two level, eighty two. You know, this is my range here for Baba where I'm looking for it to, potent- has potential to bounce again. So, you know, you might be able to get another, you know, five, six dollar move out of it at the open on Monday. Um. What did he say? Look at my stonk play. Oh, you're, huh, I'm missing a couple here. That's my jam. Charting a hype stock is tough. Look at my stonk play, best play I ever made, you'd think, right? Oh, that's a nice move. Man, you bought the underlying. Who twenty one thousand dollars in equity? What? Oh no, you bought, you bought contracts. Oh my goodness, oh, you're a psychopath. Oh, but if you held that day, it was at twenty six. Oh, man. Oh, blew it up, Jesus. That's alright. You'll, you'll, you'll learn better, you won't do it again. So. You'll never be this dumb again. Yeah, you'll never do it again. Yeah. C N P G course, Eric going from bear to ape really quick, yeah, never. Uh, my boy made a hundred K on G M E and got short, that said, got a shirt that says A strong together, silly. No. You let those expire worthless? What? Why? 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 Oh my god, dude. Oh. Why? Why? I, and, and I don't even, I know why, it doesn't matter, I know why, I don't even have to ask. I know why. Oh my god. What? Ah. No. No, 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 no. But you know what, though? I'm gonna let you in on a little secret, Wavy. Hey, I'm gonna let you in on a little secret, there's someone else in this group that did the same thing. There, there's someone else in that group that did the same thing, and that's why they're in here. So, don't feel bad. A lot of people have done it. Um. You're going, let me see, Baba on Monday. No, no, Smash, I don't think it's too late. No, I don't. No, no, I don't. I don't think it's too late. No, because that news is bad. The way, the way you trade that, Smash, when you're coming in late to a move, cuz I'm looking to short it on Monday too. Just so you know, the way you trade that move, okay? You look for, you wait to see how it opens up and you use the previous price as a structural stop. That, that's what you do, that's how you trade that. Yeah, yeah, I'm looking to short it again. Yeah, 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 I shorted ninety five P. I shorted ninety two P. It's not necessarily short every pop, it's just, like, alright, let's look at what happened, right? So gap down and fade, right? So, from here, there was nothing bullish, so there's nothing bullish that held up. So the only thing that, like, like, when I took the second trade today was right here at ninety one seventy three. Um, and, uh, you know, that was another two hundred percent to close the day on this leg here. Um, but what I'll look for is, I'll look to see how it opens up, you know? So I saw it had a little bit of support there, but not much. So I'll wait to see if it, you know, if it pops again, if it wants to come up and touch it again, you know, and just see, cuz you, you know. After an eleven percent move to the downside, don't be surprised if there is, even with the bad news, don't be surprised there's dead cat bounce. You know, so, don't be surprised. But I'll, I'll, if there is a pop, it's gonna come in at the, at the open. Most likely, it's gonna come in at the open. Yeah, cuz whoever, anyone who saw this, any bank or financial institution, retail trader, corporation, et cetera. That saw this move today, that wants to buy, they waited for that knife to just keep falling, and maybe they got a price point in mind. Okay, that they wanna buy at, but most likely, if you're gonna have a bounce, gonna be Monday at the open. If it, if there's not a bounce Monday at the open, it's most likely gonna continue for the week, have another, a third, a fourth red week in a row. So, where we'll look to for a bounce out of, um, out of Baba. If there's gonna, if there is gonna be one, we're gonna look down to my zone here, where the B F I footprints are. So we're gonna look at eighty four to eighty one. If there's, it wa- it price starts getting sideways in that range, get out, get out of it. Get out of it. Cuz normally it takes about one to two days for a market to turn around, for a, a chart to turn around. One, one to two days is normal, for a chart to make a U-turn. So, that's the target. So if we open up on Monday and it's, it's flat, or it starts knifing. So if we open up on Monday and it's it's flat, or it starts knifing, I'm gonna just short it. I'm gonna short it again and I'll I'll look to take the trade from, you know, eighty eight to um, you know, eighty one. You know, six dollar move, that should be good for at least a couple hundred percent. So, that's a nice. Good trade, and if it bounces. If it if it bounces again, I'll look to bounce from eighty one to ninety three. Cause you can see how strong those moves are. So, and I'll use this eighty one as a structural stop. You know? I'll also use the eighty one as a continuation level too. You know, so if eighty one breaks hard, I'm a short. I'm I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay short. But in this range, I'll be cautious. Right here, this little uh, three dollar range, I'll be cautious here. Because I'm anticipating them to add and protect the position. Yeah. Yeah, the highest probability of a bounce is right here. Eighty one to eighty three, or eighty four, sorry, eighty one to eighty four. Highest probability of a bounce. Nice, tight range there, though. So. That's, if there's gonna be a bounce, that's where it's gonna happen. Cause you can see, just look back in time. Look, look where the strongest B F I footprints are. This B F I, they built a position up back here, again here, again here, again here. Now whether or not they sold that position is another story. So, but if they're still holding that position, I'm gonna tell you right now. If the B F I, the B F I that purchased their position here in this range, okay? They're. They're not fucking around. I'm gonna tell you that right now, they have a lot of money, that's a billions right there. Now whether or not they distributed that position up here at the top is, we we don't know yet. But you will find out when that price gets down into this zone. You you will find out, I promise you. It's only gonna do two things. It's either gonna, it's it's either gonna bounce hard and they're gonna protect that position, or it's gonna, it's gonna knife right through it. There's, there's not gonna be a, a, a maybe situation there. It's 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 gonna be one or the other. And honestly, from from here, at this point, like, cause I'll I'll be short coming into it. I'll clear my short position. And I'll, 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 I'll probably run a, like a straddle or strangle. At that point, in anticipation of the bounce. Or a knife. That's one of my favorite things to do, actually. When it, when it's at a key level like this, like, you know, it's at like a really key level that, you know, especially if it's in a. Downward trend like so, right? If it's in a downward trend, I'll I'll run a equal weight play in anticipation of a bounce if it does happen. You know? So I'll run like an equal weight strangle, you know, I might run like, like if it gets all the way down to eighty one, right? I might run like an eighty five, like an eighty five, seventy five play. Eighty five call, seventy five put, and I'll run that position like that in anticipation of a move away from that price. So, and I'll probably buy like, maybe two weeks on it. To let it, to let it play out. And and just let it, let it do the thing, cause it's not gonna sit there, this 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 section gonna be chaos. So, see, they're gonna make a, a ten dollar move this way or a ten dollar move the other way, it's not gonna just sit, it's not gonna run sideways. Most, not in this market, I highly doubt it. And not on that ticker either. De- definitely not on this ticker, it's high beta. High beta ticker. Not gonna, not gonna sit sideways, you know, it's not, it's not a, it's not Pfizer, you know what I mean? It's a, it's it's not Procter and Gamble, you know? It's a, it's a ticker that's under a lot of pressure, and it has been for a long time. So, there's gonna be a big, there's gonna be a battle there at that price. And the winner of that battle is gonna shoot the price in one direction or the other. So. But yeah, in terms of probability, there's, there's not much probability of a bound, of a. Of a, a a bounce that would sustain from this price level, cause it's in no man's land. If it does bounce, it'd only be a dead cat bounce, most likely. A dead cat bounce from here is only gonna be an opportunity for anyone who wanted to get out up here that didn't, to sell it off. So, if it does dead cat bounce, gonna do it on Monday morning, most likely. Cause they're, they're gonna see that price, they're like, you know, let's grab it. If it does dead cat bounce, I'll just look for the rally to fade and then I'll short it. But, yeah, otherwise, if it comes in flat or nice at the open, I'm gonna just short it in anticipation to run to eighty one, eighty three love, range. And I'll look to sell that position, basically, from uh, sub eighty. Sub eighty two seventy five is where, that's the best spot to sell it. Basically between eighty two seventy five and eighty one nineteen. That's where I'll look to cash that out and open up a new, new position, open up a straddle. Or strangle, sorry. So, cause if it bounces, okay, cool, no problem. If it has a sharp bounce like it did here many times, you know, like a ten dollar move like that, okay, that's fine. I'm cool with that. One position's gonna go down, you know, uh sixty percent or so, the other one's gonna go up, two hundred, two fifty. Okay, cool, great, I make two hundred percent on the trade, next trade. You know? Well, this was fun, I didn't anticipate doing a um, doing a little class tonight, but I'm glad that. I'm I'm glad that you guys decided to pop in, it's Friday night. Y'all, y'all must be chilling at, chilling at home for the night then, or planning to do something later. How you doing? Hi. No, down, get off me, off, 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 off. No life, stonks is everything, stock life. Saw people online, you're like, let's go, yeah. Nice, good. Yeah, I I was just, Chadry and I were just sitting here, um, just doing some. I I I was just sitting here by myself, actually. I I was sitting here by myself, just charting, but I had the live. Open, just in case anyone wanted to pop in and chat, cause I was just sitting here working. Um, doing my homework for next week, and um. You know, uh, and Chadry was in here doing the same thing. And we were talking and Corey joined and then, um, then Smash joined, then Wavy joined, then Ali joined, so we did, we just kept going. So it's kinda nice to, um, you know, ho- hopefully this was actually, you know, well, this, this was a productive session as well. Um, you know, some good questions here. Uh, and this, I'll put this up on YouTube as well, just for review, so. And I'll just, I'll label it as another, just another Q and A. So, this'll be good for anyone who wasn't in, yeah. Yeah, 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 no problem. Yeah, I I mean, I'm, as I'm talking with you guys, I'm still, uh, reviewing as well, my own stuff on a different. A different screen, you know, multitasking here. But uh, but yeah. Yeah, if you have any other questions, feel free to fire them off. Yeah, yeah, homework, man, homework, this, this, this is where the money's made. The the money, the money is made in the time you put in after, after hours, you know? Like, on um. Like on, on uh, on Saturdays and Sundays, man, sometimes I spend like. Like five, six hours, seven hours in front, you know? Looking at charts, reading news, catching up on things, yeah. Yeah, that, that's, I I I I put in at least a good, at least twelve hours every weekend, minimum. Every weekend, religiously. Yeah. Um, uh, Wavy, if you go to the education, oh, you haven't been to the, brother. Go to the education section, I have pinned posts there. Um, yeah, go to education section, you'll see my pinned post. Watch every single video that's pinned in that, in the education section, and watch the series on Mark Douglas, sir. That's. Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm like, you, you follow me on Instagram, you got my, you got my um. Uh, YouTube channel too. But watch the videos if you haven't already, watch those videos in the education section. On uh, you know, that's gonna be very helpful for you. Um, it's gonna give you a good, good core, good base, and um, you know, there's like five from me. And uh, four or five videos from me that is like a good watch for you and everyone else. And also, the Mark Douglas series, it's gonna help your psychology, that's, that's the big one, man, you know? And I know, I know some of you guys in here are still, e- even, even experienced traders, man, even experienced. You know, psychology is is tough, man, it's tough, like when you have, like. You know, multiple weeks in a row where you're just like, you know, having a, just having a drawdown, you know? And um. It's, it's so important to, you know, like, alright. It's like this, it's like this. You guys are average age in here, you know, maybe between twenty five to thirty five in here, right? Alright, you guys have been brushing your teeth and washing your body and. Um, you know, eating breakfast every day for the last three decades, right? You know, you do those things every single day, you know, you, and then, like, you go to work every day. Uh, you know, you drive your car or whatever, you do these routines, right? You have, you have, you have routines, and, you know. You uh, you don't, you don't, you don't break the routine, just because you brushed your teeth ten years ago, doesn't mean you don't, you stopped brushing your teeth today, right? Well, it's the same thing with your, with training your mind, right? It's it's the same thing, you know, you have to constantly train your, train your mind and and stay. Um, you know, stay level-headed and stay in your zone, it's like Chadry. Is a very experienced trader, right? And he's been, he's been having a drawdown on his swing trades with me, right, over the last couple weeks, the last like two weeks. And you know what he, you know, something that jumped out to me, that he said earlier in this week, and he's very experienced. He has a, he has a lot of trades under his belt and he knows what he's doing, but you know, he said earlier in the week, he said, you know what? I went back and I watched Trading in the Zone from Mark Douglas, even though he's probably seen it two dozen times, right? And so have I, I watch, I watch the trading ser- I watch the psychology series every month, religiously. I I just, I just watch it every month. That's it, just a refresher, you know? I just, I just, and I'm constantly watching other psychology videos as well, and the point is, is because you wanna be, you know, you wanna keep your. You know, you wanna be refreshing yourself, uh, with your psychology constantly, you know, you wanna, you wanna keep doing that. Because um, you know, you wanna stay sharp, you wanna keep the mind sharp, and you wanna stay in that pattern of having those. Good habits, you know, having, having good habits. So. That's the, you know, that's the thing, so I highly encourage everyone, if you haven't already. To watch that Mark Douglas series, seven part series, uh, that's posted in the education section. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna be very beneficial for you. Be right back, I'm gonna grab some water. Constantly work, you know, developing and refining the mind is uh, you know, it's just a great, a great. I I mean, there's no better time spent, honestly, there's, there's no better time spent. Thanks for sharing that, Smash, I'm gonna pin that in the education section. Nice. Yeah, I'll pin that in the education section. No, I haven't. Why is it a, is it a technical book? Or is it a psychology book? That's why, that's why, that's why it's boring. You know what? You know what, I'm gonna tell you something. Most of the time, we like to do things, especially when it comes to reading. Thanks for sharing that, uh, especially when it comes to reading, we like, mo- mo- just as people. We like to read things that are stimulating, that keep us stimulated, and it's very, it can be very hard to. Read a technical book, but, the value that's in the technical book. Is, that's where the money is, you know, like, when I grew up, um, you know, as a child. I was, I I I'm actually opposite, I'm weird. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm opposite of most people in that regard. I actually get bored of reading, like fiction, fictional books or like stories and whatnot. Uh, because I don't find any value in it. I I get bored of those, they put me to sleep, I actually love technical books. That's why, that's why I'm a, a master technician as well, because I I like reading. You know, I I I I can sit there and read through, you know, a book on how to build a, build an engine. Which has nothing stimulating in it whatsoever, there, there's nothing stimulating about that, you know, but I enjoy that. And that's why I also enjoy the trading, but, the, the point is, the point that I was getting at is, that. Forcing yourself to enjoy it and like, I guess like enjoying the process of reading something technical. Is uh, I guess like, I I guess maybe it's like a shift of mindset, right? You know? Um, what'd you say, I I like practical stuff, that, those are my favorite kind of games growing up. Anything building related, but this book, this book's tough. Yeah, I I feel you. Um, I guess it's like a shift of mindset of like, process, it's like, you know, it's like, alright. If I can, if I can hammer through this technical book, you know, what's that gonna do for me? You know what I mean? That's a good one, Ali, yeah, make it a game, yeah. Yeah, see how well you can absorb the knowledge. That's a great point, yeah. Take notes while you're rereading, constantly, yeah, make, make a quiz out of it, make it a game. Yeah, I bet you do, and so I, I bet, that's all you do is read technical stuff for your work. It's nothing but. It's nothing but. The whole thing, it's literally tech, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's nothing more technical than that. I'll have to check that book out. That you sent me, um, Smash, I'll uh, I'll definitely check that out. Yeah, I mean, taking good notes is just, just key in general, but, yeah, I I guess I always look at it, what'd you say? Yeah, I agree, yeah, once you have foundational knowledge, it's definitely easier. You know, I I remember being a child and trying to, uh, teach myself to, um. How to be a technician, and I remember reading it the first time. Reading through like, like an M M I book, and I was like, man, this is so difficult and so hard, because you don't have understanding, but. Then like, once you have the, like you said, foundational knowledge, foundation. Then like, once you have the, like you said, foundational knowledge, foundational understanding. Then you can develop, you know, a little more enthusiasm for it, so, what you got here? Oh, man. Yeah, nice. No, it doesn't. Oh, yeah, Ali?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm type A to an extreme for sure, I know, I know you are too, Ange. I feel like. You know? That's a good point, Ali, yeah, it is, it's nothing but type Bs. I feel like um. Uh to be a trader, man, I feel like most people that are traders are type A. It's just my, just my vo- just my, my guess. Yeah, I don't think a type B would would wanna even engage in something like this. Yeah, cause they're gonna be like, why? Yeah, they're like, fuck that, I'm not gonna do that, you know, they're not gonna do that. I feel like a type B is the type to like invest, like ten year, twenty year at a time. Yeah, dollar cost average, yes, exactly, that's what I'm saying, yeah, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do something like this. Yeah, yeah, they're bag holding right now. Yeah, I mean, you can also be like somewhere in the middle, but like be like a little more biased to one side, you know? That's funny, does it always have to be perfect? Yes. Yes, it does. You know, that's also why I like, that's also like, uh why I'm, you know, so drawn to motorcycles and cars and machinery. Because there's no like, there's no, there's no room for error, like it it satisfies me mentally. Like, I'm like, no, it has to fit like perfectly, like there's no. There's no, there's no, you know, there's no gaps, there's no, um. You know, there there there's no, nothing lackadaisical, it's either black, you know, it's black and white, it's binary, it's either correct or it's not. That's it, either works or does not. Yeah, it's sat- it satisfies that part of me as well. I wonder how they loaded on options here at the end of the day. Hey, they just been buying this hella put options on Spy all day, but market-wide though. They uh. Yeah, yeah, actually Spy is the uh, you know what's funny? For the week, I'm gonna shorten Netflix next week, um for the week. Netflix now again has the highest put premium in the market. For the week, and for the day today, Spy has the highest put premium. Just, just so you know. Just so you know what what happened there. For the day, Spy is the highest put premium in the market. And Netflix for the week, I'm gonna shorten Netflix again, they owe me money from that earnings rally. What'd you say, you can imagine during my wedding, they lost one. There was one table without a centerpiece, I was dying thinking about and uneventable with no. Yeah, yeah, Netflix owes me money, that's funny. I may or may not have asked them to take one or two flowers off every other arrangement to make up for it, oh, that's funny. Oh, you got Netflix puts? Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, we were talking about this, yeah. Yeah. Good, but you're you're for August though, right? Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, you're you're for August though, yeah, I know your your husband's got a. Yeah, Amazon and Apple, yeah, I'm I'm gonna short Amazon again. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna short it again. You know, I it's kinda silly that they, you know what, I made this call yesterday, I wanted to short them into their earnings. And my hypothesis was correct. They are down on customer spending. Yeah, they are down on customer spending. Nah, it's it's, it's this bullshit, man, this is bullshit. Dude, they made their money from um AWS, not from customers buying products. So the 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 customer demand, yeah, the demand is down. So the the obviously the price traded against me, but my hypothesis is still, yeah, I know, I know it is, I know that AWS is killer. Um but uh, you know, I I'ma still stick with my bearish hypothesis here. Um. But yeah, I I'm gonna short it again, I I will, I'll I'll definitely short it again, because I knew, I was like, you know what, there's no way. Dude, Ali, you know this, you know, cause you know, you know what it's like to have a like logistic, like deal with logistics. I was like, man, there's no way they're not dealing with at least some margin compression. Um with those fuel costs and customer demand being down, I'm like, there's no way. There's no way. The only wild card they had was AWS, that's literally, bro. Bro, sixty percent of their revenue this quarter came from AWS. Sixty, I was like, yo. That, you know, that one, I can't, I can't predict it, but. Yeah, I was like, bro, there's no way, there's no way that this is gonna beat. I'm like, yo, they owe me two Gs now, like this, you know, that's it, like. There, I was like, there's no way they're gonna beat. But the AWS, they they, that's a printer, yeah, I know it did, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. I know it did, but it it still doesn't take away from my hypothesis about customer demand being down. You know, so whatever, it's all good. I'll short it again. Yeah, ex- exactly, exactly, you're you're, you know, is your husband listening in right now? Is he, is he, is he tuned in right now? Is he in the room? No, okay. You tell him he's a smart man, he, he's a smart man, he knows, man, yeah. He he had the same thought I had. Same thought, I was like, dude, there's no way these guys are gonna beat. The only ace they had was is AWS, that's it, I I know Corey took like a little hundred dollar bet on it too. Um. Yeah, it's all good though, whatever. Um. What'd you say? So many. Because my husband has a business that uses ecommerce, yeah, 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 exactly. Yeah, I I know, I know, I'm like, dude, they're like, production's down, customer demand is down. Margin compression from fuel, like dude, come on, man, it should miss, but whatever. Whatever, it's all good.